All right, good evening, everybody. It is six o'clock on the dot, so we're live on Facebook and live on WRCT. So my name is Philip Given. I am the Acting Director of Economic and Community Development. First, thanks, everybody, for coming here tonight. We, on this side of the table, will try and be as brief as possible in our presentations, because we know that many of you came out today to ask us some questions. So quickly, I'm going to talk a bit about the Department of Economic and Community Development, then I'm going to pass it off to some of my colleagues here, who I'll introduce in a second. So, in total, the Department of Economic and Community Development has 35 employees. Most folks don't know, but the department consists of the Bureau of Permits, Planning and Zoning, the Bureau of Health, the Bureau of Housing Services, and the Bureau of Economic Development. So, these fine folks up here are representatives from most of those bureaus. We have a couple special guests, like Chief Banker down here at the end. So, we're here tonight to talk to you about community development. So, we'll spend a few minutes, each of us, talking about our areas of expertise and some of the initiatives we're working on, and then the last half will be question and answer from you folks. So, we will try and, if we can, limit questions and dialogue and discussion, really, to the topic of community development for tonight. So, if you're out there on social media, please share the WRCT feed. If you have questions and we have time, I'll try and monitor some of those, and we can bring your questions forward to these folks up here. So, down here, of course, we have Chief Troy Banker from the York City Police Department. We have James Crosby, who is the Deputy Director of the Bureau of Housing Services. Of course, we have Mayor Helfrich, Mayor of the City of York. We have Diaz Woodard, who -- what is your official title, Diaz?
Recreation Program Specialist.
Recreation Program Specialist, also helps Mayor with the Community Ecosystem Initiative. Then we have Craig Walt with the Bureau of Health, and Kim Hall with the Bureau of Health. So, without further ado, I'm going to pass it over to Mayor Helfrich, who is going to talk about the Community Ecosystem Initiative, as well as some of the hiring outreach improvements that we've been making.
Thank you, Philip. Welcome, everybody. Thank you all for coming out. Wanted to start off with a little bit of what we took away from the last council meeting and our discussions about hiring practices. So, I wanted to talk about some of the improvements that we've made to try and get the word out about employment opportunities here at the city, because when we can, we are trying to -- hi, Sylvia. When we can, we are trying to hire folks from in the city. That's part of community development. So, we have now started a practice where we are posting every week what the jobs are that are available. We had been giving them out to the council members, but now we are also sending them out to anybody that wants to be on our list. So, we've had a list, just the city's email list. So, if you're not on the city's email list and you want updates, that's how you get our press releases and all our other information, and now also weekly postings about job opportunities. We also do have -- our job applications are online. So, if you don't have access to get online, you can use the library, or you can come right here to City Hall. We have computers for you to use here. And soon, we're going to have a little board up. It's not up yet, but we'll have a little board up right here in the lobby. So, if you're coming down to City Hall for any reason, you can stop and see all of the postings. Did I miss anything about outreach?
No, just that I even tonight received some feedback that it is more visible than it has been, which is good.
Good, good, because we are hiring. I believe there are at least 10 different positions open right now. The other thing I wanted to talk about hiring was something that I believe Chief Banker kind of initiated, but also Chief Geerdorf has been working on, and that's our participation with the York City School District and their new Public Safety Academy. So, this is the way, I don't think, it's a secret, that our, the diversity in our police department and our fire departments has never been there. And we are trying to work on it. And to work on it, we need folks to apply. We need folks to learn about the different types of skills that they need and what they need to pass the academies, and we need them to stay here in York and apply, to become firefighters, to become police officers here in the city. So, we are working with Chief Muldro at the York City School District, and they are starting a new academy, the Public Safety Academy. So, we're going to be kind of in there, helping the students to learn. So, that's something that I'm very excited about. Onto the Community Ecosystem Initiative. And again, Philip said we're going to try to be brief, so there's a lot of things that we're not going to be covering, that we're working on, so you're welcome to ask us about those afterwards. But I consider the Community Ecosystem Initiative the key piece of my goals here in the City of York. That was really one of the things that I ran on. How do we get, how do we help people in the communities lift themselves up? We know that we have services all over the city, all over the county. Those of us that have ever taken the poverty simulation with the Community Progress Council, if you have never done it, please, if you have an opportunity, do that, because within one hour, it seems like you get a lifetime's experience about all the barriers there are every single day, when you are trying to just keep your family afloat, trying to get to different services, trying to get on the buses, trying not to lose your job at the same time. It's, if you are not in that financial state, it is a great learning tool. I would encourage that for anyone. But, you know, this, again, to be brief, what we have done is, in an effort to get the services to everyone in their neighborhoods, we have split the city up into different communities. It's not necessarily the same as the neighborhood associations or anything. This was just something that made sense by concentration, by density of population, approximately 3,000 people per area. When you look at the city and you try and work with 44,000 people and think, how do we help 44,000 people? It's kind of overwhelming. But if you can break it down to helping the people behind 800 doors, about 3,000 people, now you're talking about something that's manageable. 800 doors, our community outreach folks can do that, can knock on every door and actually talk to people within three weeks, and then repeat and repeat, to build up trust, to build up communications in our neighborhood. That is the goal, to build up that trust and communication, and then to connect the people in the neighborhoods with the services. The way they do that is they reach out to the, first, they reach out and learn about the services, which our four coordinators, we have four right now, I'm hoping to hire two more within the next couple of weeks, actually. But we have four coordinators now that have all started working in the Salem Square neighborhood, and they have been learning all about the services that are available, and now they have been reaching out to all the businesses, the houses of worship, anybody in the area that has a business or church or anything, and they are doing research and finding out things like, what is your business about? You know, how long have you been in business? And what suggestions do you have to improve our neighborhood? And how do you want to participate? How do we get the neighborhoods to be working together? And so, that is their second step, and they're almost complete with that. And the third step is going to be to schedule different types of activities, different types of educational sessions within that neighborhood. And then the fourth step will be to go door to door and start knocking on everybody's door and just finding out, hey, what can we do for you? Is there anything that would help make your life better? Do you need career training? Do you need, do your children need mentoring? Do you need prenatal care? Whatever it is, we want to, we need to find out what we need in our communities to lift each other up. And there is a handout that gets more detailed into the Community Ecosystem Initiative. It's over there on the table with some other handouts. I'm not sure what all is over there. But we did, thank you, Diaz. We did put together a map that you can check out later and find out where you are in the different neighborhoods. What we have right now, everybody is working in the Salem Square neighborhood here, and then, very shortly, we're going to split the four folks up into two groups, that another group is then going to work over at Hannah Penn with the York City School District's Community of Hope project. So, if you don't know, they are opening up a small community center in the Hannah Penn School there as well. So, we have the Championship Academy that were, or Championship Community Center on West King Street that was donated to the community. So, we'll have the Salem Square area, and then we'll be over at Hannah Penn, and then we'll split off two more people and cover the Northwest and the Northeast, and then hopefully, the two new people that'll be coming on will cover the Southwest and the South. You can see, while we cover every part of the city, we also know that the needs of the people in the city are different. If I could go out and hire 16, if I had the money to hire 16 people today, I would hire all 16, and we would cover every neighborhood immediately, but we don't. We have the funding right now to cover about six people. And so, let me put this down. So, we are going to start out addressing folks in the neighborhoods that are the most impoverished neighborhoods and the most violent neighborhoods in our community. Let's see, what else I wanted to say about that. You know, once our, once our community ecosystem coordinator, so we've got these folks, Community Ecosystem Coordinators. Diaz is the Community Ecosystem Manager, so he works with them all. But as soon as they're more established, we are hoping that each of our coordinators will then be able to create groups of volunteers. You know, some of you may know that the city used to get a lot of money from the federal government, over $4 million more than we get now. And at that time, we were able to have a lot more paid community outreach. We don't have those resources anymore, so it's up to us, as a community, to pull it together and do what we need to do for our neighbors and our neighborhoods. So, the coordinators are organizers, but they're not here to do everything. We need people, we need volunteers to come to them and work with them to help us, to help us reach our fellow citizens in the community. Diaz, do you want to add anything to what we're doing, or your vision?
I think that, I mean, everything that you just explained, I think it pretty much lays it out. The overall goal is just to make sure that we have resources accessible to the individuals in the community. I don't want to go over what he's already said, but I mean, we're working hard, beating the ground, starting from grassroots, just trying to make sure that we know everything that's going on in the community, we're aware where it's happening at, we know what areas are areas of concern, and just figure out the best way to meet the need. But while I'm here, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the ecosystem coordinators, if that's not a problem.
Yes, sir.
Tanisha Wilks, if you can stand up when we say your name, just so they can know, everybody can know who they are when you see them in the community. We have Tanisha Wilks.
You should also clap for these folks.
Yes, because they are working very hard.
And she will be working in the Salem Square neighborhood?
Yes, we have Felicia Dennis.
And ultimately, when we get done the training and everything, she'll be working in the Hannah Penn neighborhood?
Geraldine Baptista.
And Jay will be working in our Northeast neighborhood?
And last but not least, Ms. Selena Generec.
And she will be working in the Northwest area. And by just starting with those four, we've been able to at least try to replace some of these resources, like the Princess Street Center, the Jefferson Center, these resources that many people around here grew up with, but were lost to us because of cuts in federal I just want to add one other thing. While this vision of mine and the communities, because I didn't make this up, this is actually fed to me by a lot of community folks, while it's been around for a while, it took us till the end of last year to get a donation from Wellspan of $125,000 to start this. None of this is taxpayer money. We're doing this from outside. And so, we, and then we got folks started at the, earlier in this year. We also got an agreement with the York City School District that, once we build up, we'll be able to use their K through eight schools after the after-school program, so from 6:30 to 9:00, to utilize those as community centers. And also, we are working on a program with Hack that Hack would bring, bring different types of degrees or classes directly into those neighborhood schools. And the vision there is, of course, many, you know, single moms and single dads find it hard to balance the kids and also improving their ability to make career choices. So, we're hoping that by utilizing the schools, we'll be able to have the kids doing something in the gym or the library, and the moms and dads can be taking classes and improving their lives, knowing that the kids are right there in the same building with them, to try to get them out of that, you know, really out of survival mode, and say, you can relax a little bit, relax and learn. Because we do know, even whether it's in the York City School District, or people trying to take classes and advance themselves, the stress of life reduces your ability to concentrate and to gain knowledge, and so, we're trying to reduce that stress. So, I'm very excited about where we're going here. Diaz, did you have anything more? I know I jumped in, and as you can tell, this is the thing I'm most passionate about in the city. This is what I really want to see happen. This is how we change the city. So, with that...
Pass it back over to me?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we move on, I forgot to introduce all of these folks sitting over here. But, you know, if you've ever emailed anyone at the city, in our signature line, we have a little line that says, "Working with you for a better York." And all of these folks, not only these folks up here, over there, but scattered throughout this audience, they really embody that. So, you know, you guys don't hear "thank you" enough, but thank you, not only for being here, but for what you do every single day. So, Barb Kovacs is our Director of the Bureau of Health. Landa Nace is our Chief Opportunity Development Officer. Ms. Sherry McFadden is Economic Development RDA Specialist. And the infamous Steve Buffington, Deputy Director of Permits Planning and Zoning. But also scattered throughout the audience, Chief Geerdorf appeared out of nowhere, so thank you, Chief, for being here. Appreciate that. We have Monica Kruger with Bureau of Health, Ricardo Quintero with Mayor's Office, Lieutenant Wentz is back there. And then a big thank you to two elected officials that showed up tonight, Councilman Buckingham and our Treasurer, Joe Jiffcoat. So, thank you, guys, for coming out as well. With that, because he is so excited, I will pass it over to James Crosby with the Bureau of Housing Services.
Thank you, Philip. I am so excited to be here to tell you true. The Bureau of Housing Services is staffed by two and a half people. Myself is the Deputy Director, a Program Funding Analyst, and a portion of the time of an Office Coordinator. Our primary responsibility is managing the Community Development Block Grant and the Home Investment Partnership Act grant. The City of York is considered a participating jurisdiction or entitlement community by HUD. The city receives this designation because of a high number of individuals and families who are considered low to moderate income in the City of York. Being a participating jurisdiction entitles the city to receive CDPG and home funds through formula allocation directly from HUD annually. Each year, the city receives approximately $450,000 in home funds. And HUD is very clear on what these funds may be used for. 10% of the funds may go to program administration. The remaining funds must be spent on the creation of an affordable housing unit to be occupied by a low to moderate income family or individual. We understand that our home funds cannot support a major housing development project. We use our home funding to leverage other funding sources, such as tax credits and construction loans. Over the last five to six years, we have spent home funds on the creation of the Homes at Jackson Park, which is 39 units, George Street Commons, 32 units, and six units developed by Habitat for Humanity for homeownership. We are currently finishing up three rental units on Boundary Avenue in conjunction with the Crispus Addicts Youth Bill Program. We anticipate breaking ground on York family residences on State Street, which is going to be 56 units in late summer, developing 16 units for homeownership on West Chestnut Street, and the Homes at Jackson Park II, hopefully, in the coming year. The First Time Home Buy program, where the city provides down payment and closing cost assistance, is also funded using home funds. The Community Development Block Grant is the larger of the two grants received by the city. Each year, the city receives approximately $1.4 million. The HUD regulations for the Community Development Block Grant are very different from the home grant. The regulations allow 20% of the grant to be spent on administration and planning, and 15% on public service. At a minimum, at least 70% of the funds have to benefit low to moderate income people. The City of York's low to moderate income participation rate hovers at around 90%. The CDPG program permits a wide range of eligible activities, activities such as acquisition, demolition, public facilities, and improvements, public services, code enforcement, economic development, and relocation are all eligible activities. Every three years, the Bureau of Housing Services issues a request for proposals. That request alerts the public and service providers that we are seeking proposals and applications to allocate our CDPG funds. The types of activities we are interested in funding are included in the RFP. The activities most, must be consistent with our community needs identified in our five-year consolidated plan. Applications go through a vigorous review process by in-house staff. Funds are limited, so applications that are complete meet the regulatory requirements in terms of eligibility, meeting a national objective, cost effectiveness, have measurable outcomes, are considered for funding. If selected, CDB funds are obligated to that activity for a three-year period. 2020 is the final year of our current three-year cycle. In the summer of 2020, the Bureau will be requesting proposals and applications for CDPG eligible activities to be funded for the years 2021 through 2023. We will advertise in the newspaper, have public hearings, and post application on the city website, making known that the funding is available. The City of York has seen a decrease in both Community Development Block Grant and home funding over the last five years. All indications from Washington DC is this trend will continue. Please, we urge you to please contact your congressmen and senators, and urge them to allocate more funding to these worthy programs. The Bureau is in the process of developing its five-year consolidated plan for the years 2020 through 2024. The plan determines how we will spend our community block rent funds over the next five years. We had focus groups and public hearings to get input from various community stakeholders and the public as this plan is being developed. There is currently a need survey on the city website that I urge you to log in and complete. This will help us complete our plan with the most input from the public as possible. Thank you.
James, can you talk a bit about why the Community Needs Survey is so important in this process? And if you're at home or you're in the audience right now, if you go to the website, there's a big red bar at the top that says Housing Services Community Needs Survey. You can click that and fill it out. If you need a printed copy, if you come to City Hall, it's 11 pages, so it's a little difficult for us to print in advance, but if you need a printed copy, if you're unable to access a computer, come into City Hall, and we can take care of that for you.
You know, it's very important that, you know, that we get as much public input into our planning process as possible. You know, of course, we, at the city level, aren't aware of all the needs in the community, so we need your input, and our Citizens Participation Plan calls for citizen input, citizens' input from the public. So, the more input that we have, you know, it helps us plan our limited resources, you know, as best as possible.
Mayor, anything to add to that?
Yeah, when you were speaking about contacting your representatives in Washington DC, it also just reminded me that the census is coming up, and part of our allocation is based on our population. So, you need to, we all need to encourage our neighbors to participate, work on plans to allay any fears that might be out there. The doors have to be answered when these folks knock, or we get less money for our community. So, we have to educate folks and work with them to make sure that, I know that there are very real fears out there, particularly among our Latino populations or all immigrants, but we have to, if we want resources for our city, we have to find ways to help them allay those fears so that we can all be counted.
Yeah, and just to expand on that, Ricky, it was probably three months ago that we heard from the Census Bureau? So, about three months ago, the Census Bureau reached out to us directly. So, Ricky in the mayor's office, and then Mike Pritchard, our city planner, they've been working with the Census Bureau. The Census Bureau recognizes how important it is for the City of York to have an accurate count. So, we are working with them on best practices, how to communicate to our entire community, and we'll be utilizing the ecosystem coordinators in that process as well, to make sure that we have an accurate representation for the census. Thank you, James. Appreciate it. So, we'll pass it over to Craig Walt, who is our Community Health Services Supervisor, and Kim Hall, who is a Disease Intervention Specialist with the Bureau of Health. And just real quick on the Bureau of Health, you know, I think that there's a large portion of the population, or folks that just passed through the City of York, that see the clinic on Philadelphia Street. But really, the Bureau of Health is more than just the clinic. We have, we have a number of folks on staff that are dedicated to public health, and tonight, you're going to learn that public health means a lot more than, I think, most people think it does. So, I have a lot of respect for these folks down here, so I'm very excited that they're here.
Thank you, Philip. As Philip mentioned, my name's Craig Walt, and I'm the Community Health Services Supervisor with the City of York. Just want to start by thanking everyone for the opportunity to share about the Bureau, and then to share a little bit more about some of the expanded and new programs and services that we're offering to city residents. But I did just want to start off with a little bit of background information on the Bureau, because I often get the comments, "Oh, I didn't even know the city had a health department," or "What is it that you actually do?" So, like I said, I just wanted to start off with a brief overview of what we are all about. So, the City of York Bureau of Health is one of only 10 local health departments in the state of Pennsylvania. So, as a result of this, we have access to a variety of state and federal health funds that really enable us to provide public health services for free or at a very low cost to city residents. We have clinical services that are offered out of our clinic location on 435 West Philadelphia Street. Some of those programs include our immunization program, tuberculosis screening, HIV and STD services, lead poisoning prevention activities, and our maternal-child health, Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies program. In addition to that, we have a variety of community-based programs and services that include our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program, the Lead Hazard Control Program, and the Safe and Healthy Communities Program, which actually focuses on a variety of topics such as physical activity, promoting healthy food access and nutrition, as well as some other injury prevention topics, including traffic safety and preventing falls among older adults. We have some brochures over on the side table over there that kind of describe those services in a little more detail, and have all of our contact information. So, please feel free to contact us if you have any questions about our programs. So, this evening, I do want to focus on some of the developments with our Healthy Food Access Initiatives, and then I'm going to pass things off to Kim Hall to share about our expanded HIV and STD program. So, healthy food access is really essential to leading a healthy lifestyle on a daily basis. We all know that poor diet is directly linked with a variety of chronic health conditions such as obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. And then also, our diets influence how we feel physically and mentally on a daily basis. So, that can really be, you know, our energy levels, our cognitive ability, and just our overall feelings of wellness. So, that's why we feel, you know, healthy food access is so important, but we know it's really a struggle for a lot of our residents when we look at, you know, access to grocery markets and other places to get healthy foods. And it can be even more difficult when people have issues with transportation or mobility. So, you know, even thinking back a few years ago, when the giant, which, the giant grocery store out in West York is not within the city limits, but it was just, you know, outside of the limits, right on the west end. And so, when that store closed down, that had a huge impact on... And so when that store closed down, that had a huge impact on residents living on that side of the city. So for that reason, we really think it's important to take a comprehensive approach to increasing food access at the neighborhood level. So for the last several years, we've been trying to increase this through mobile market initiatives, as well as the development of a Healthy Corner Store Initiative. So through that, we've partnered with a variety of corner store owners throughout the city and other community organizations to host the York Fresh Food Farms Mobile Market. And then also, in the case of corner stores, we've actually provided funding and resources to help them increase the amount of fresh and healthy foods available in the store and then to promote those options to their customers. So the other really great benefit of the Healthy Corner Store Initiative is that this program aims to serve small business owners, many of which are minority-owned and have been operating within our city for many years. So this is also a great economic development program as well. So, you know, while there is a focus on some of these stores that have been operating in the neighborhoods, new business owners are also eligible for this program, but there is preference given to stores that are operating in understerved areas of the city. So access really is just a piece of the puzzle, though, and that's why we're in the process of piloting the Heart Smarts Program, which is an evidence-based nutrition program that we actually host at the mobile market and corner store locations throughout the city. So Heart Smarts combines nutrition education, health screenings, which are actually being offered in partnership with the York College Master's Level Nursing Program, and then some other incentives to encourage participants to make a healthy purchase right on the spot. So actually, after a participant would complete the educational component, they receive four heart bucks, which can be redeemed immediately. And then also, the nutrition educators are there on site to help guide that purchase. So the program includes eight different lessons which can be offered on a weekly or monthly basis. Right now, we're offering the program weekly at several different sites. So we're offering it at, I think, four or five mobile market locations and then three corner store locations, including Lee's Food Market, Pax's Food Market, and Green's Food Market. So this current set of classes is going to continue until mid-August. We also have copies of the market schedule and Heart Smart schedule over on the side table there. And to date, we, since we started the program on June 24th, we've had 287 participants and over, sorry, and 1,073 heart bucks redeemed. So it's really great to see that number of participants engaging in the program and that those incentives are already being redeemed. So the current pilot that we have is funded by the State Department of Health through the Preventive Health and Health Services Block Grant. I know that's a mouthful. But moving forward, we're actually exploring some partnerships to pull in funding and pull in some of the components that other organizations already work on so that we can really create a sustainable program that's not going to be any cost to the local taxpayers. And so the last thing I really want to end on with this is that we do need help from residents to identify good candidates for this program. So we're looking to engage new store owners for the program. And we know that, you know, residents often have relationships with store owners that we would really like to, you know, to work off of. And so we want to work with store owners that may already have an interest in promoting healthy foods in their neighborhood or might already have a small amount of fresh options available in the store, and then we can work with them to grow that. So then also, the stores that would enroll would serve as future sites for the Heart Smarts Program. So with that said, I just want to, you know, thank everybody again for the opportunity to share about this initiative. It's in its early stages, but we're really excited to see where it goes. And then I'm going to pass things off to my colleague, Kim Hall. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing me to be here to speak. I just want to quickly touch base about our Sexual Wellness Clinic that has officially opened up. We are conducting STD and HIV screenings for free. We have partnered with the Department of Health, and we have a certified registered nurse practitioner who is on-site Tuesdays from 10:30 to 2:30 to conduct physical examinations and provide treatment for STD-related illnesses. Again, the treatment is free. Opposite those hours, in general, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5, we do offer free STD and HIV testing. The HIV testing is conventional, so we actually draw a tube of blood, so we test for HIV, syphilis, and we test for gonorrhea and chlamydia. Those are the four reportable diseases to the Department of Health. So at any point, you can call and schedule an appointment with myself or my coworker, Courtney Stevens. Any questions?
Yeah, and we'll, we'll do questions for all of these things at the end, so if you are thinking of them, obviously, we have the podium here, so we can move on to that. Chief, you're going to be next here, but before I pass it over to him, you may have read that Chief Bankard is retiring in January, so.
Ooh.
I know I echo the mayor, but thank you for your leadership and everything you've done. And now you get to talk about your favorite initiative.
The Group Violence Initiative, we're in our third year. This is intended to be fully implemented within three years. We are fully implemented this year. So the progress this year is that we have a 20% reduction in total shootings, non-fatal shootings. We have approximately a 66% reduction in homicides. This year, in the beginning of this year, we restructured the police department to reflect our primary response, our primary priority, which is our gun violence. So the idea with that restructuring was that instead of having a single unit, which is three officers and a couple of officers in our community services and a project manager concentrating on GVI, which is our primary priority, I shifted it to that we are doing GVI-related incidents or operations 24/7. So it's within the Patrol Division as well. We did that through training in May. We did a departmental training. We trained the entire police department in a single day. I think it was like 92% of the police department in a single day. In addition to that, we took the opportunity to then extend that training to the public. And we went out, the mayor and I and David Kennedy, the initiator of Group Violence Initiative, went to three different locations, one of them at the Strand, and explained what GVI was. Once again, we had a video from the Department of Justice that was created for us to help us pass on that message. So the entire department is based, when they make decisions on what operations to do and when they make decisions on what we call unobligated time, it surrounds our priority of the reduction of gun violence. So GVI is two components. It's really, it's a community initiative with a law enforcement component is how it's really initiated to us. The reason why law enforcement, the police department manages it, because we have the infrastructure to actually do it, right? So we didn't have to create a whole other organization in order to initiate GVI. So GVI is a community initiative with a law enforcement component. So the idea of, so what we have, we have a project manager, and that project manager is supposed to, and has, and I'll give you some other stats, is supposed to create that balance between our responses to evidence-based intelligence of group-related violence, both in the community, support and outreach side, and the law enforcement operation side. Supposed to have that balance. So he creates that balance. And so far this year, we've taken 22 guns off of the street from our GVI unit, which is only a three-man unit. We have 25 felonies and 66 misdemeanors and over 200 warrants. To put that in perspective, that's more evolved last year. This was, this is a credit to that unit, but it's also a credit to the Patrol Division and the rest of the officers from our May training that we have incorporated the ideals of GVI and the balance of both law enforcement operations and support and outreach throughout the entire department. So in addition to that, we do, on the support and outreach side, some of our numbers is that this year, we have 73 custom notifications. A custom notification is a personal message that we give to those who may have influence or those who may be actually active in gun violence with 106 touches. And touches is what I call opportunities to talk to somebody about GVI on an individual basis, but it goes a little bit further than what we're doing right here. It goes out, those touches are an opportunity to get feedback from those who have been victimized, maybe not directly, but through neighborhoods, and so that they can give us, so that we can then provide them with any type of service to them. So that's what we consider a touch. And to put that in comparison, we had 12 in 2018. So this year, Jim Tyson, who is our project manager, has really stepped up to that. That was our main goal. So we have like three times as many customs as we did last year. So the mayor and I went to speak with David Kennedy in early 2018 to make sure that we were on track. When the mayor wanted to make sure that we were implementing GVI as it was intended because he had been aware of it, and he said we were, and we moved right on to the next phase, and he said, "Well, I want you to try to do something that nobody else is doing," but it was an idea of his and he's been trying to promote it, and that's CPRVV, which is Community Policing Response to Victims of Violence. Overall, the criminal justice system spends about 98 cents to every dollar on the offender, very little on the victim itself. And that includes the estimate of time of a police officer. So the idea of the CPRVV is that when we have an incident, you see the police officers come out, they get the evidence, they do interviews, they do the typical things that you see police officers do in a shooting incident or a crime scene. The one thing that we, no one has really done, and we're the only jurisdiction that has GVI that is doing this, and I think we're the only one in the country, is that we simultaneously, on the support and outreach side, will go to the victims of that issue, of that incident, and tell them, and give them resources right there where it can be, it can be temporary housing, it can be gift cards, you know, so that, you know, they can, if they're not able to, you know, for food and other emergency temporary resources that we give to them. Counseling, our chaplains now go out and talk to them. So this is, this is, again, it's that balance. So you know the cops are going to come out, right? When there's a shooting, you know what the cops are going to do. They're going to try to get the evidence, interviews, and try to gain information for the suspects and make the arrest. But the other part of it that nobody does, and what we do now, is that we put equal amount of resources into the secondary, many times they're secondary victims where you're not the person that actually got shot, but the family's affected because if a breadwinner gets shot and he's out, they need that assistance. So, so we're there, and then we do follow-ups with that afterwards. But we just had one, and a good example was the homicide we had last weekend. It was 4 o'clock in the morning, Jim Tyson, project manager, and that was, that was the job I told him he had to do. He has to answer the phone. He got up, went in, and he did, he did a CPRVV that night. The mayor and I specifically, many times, on scene. That's how quick that is now. We haven't gotten a lot of feedback from them, and we don't expect that because we do not expect them to come back and give us feedback on that. They're worrying about their recovery from their victimization or their family member. But we feel that we have provided some additional resources to the victims of violence other than just traditional police work. So the other thing I wanted to mention was that GVI continues this year, and we still have, we have resources that we're applying for, for grants for 2020, that GVI is going to continue to be paid for without any taxpayer money. Thank you. You know, I always like to hear that at the end of everything.
Yes.
I want to expand on that a little bit. And first, I want to, as I always try to, thank Mayor Bracy and Chief Kaylee for initiating the GVI program. As the chief said, I had been researching this probably two or three years before we initiated it here, but I'm very thankful that the former administration did initiate it. And now we have expanded it, as chief said, into a new realm that is taking into account the victims of violence. The chief said something very important. This is a community initiative with law enforcement components, or with a law enforcement component. Being that we did start with the law enforcement component mostly, and they did have the organization to get it up and running, we have been strong in the law enforcement component. However, GVI actually has three main components. It is the law enforcement component, they are the law enforcement component, the service provider component, and then the community outreach component. And we have been very successful, I would say, on the first two. We always need more help. Life Path Ministries has been an amazing partner, and we hope to continue working with them. But we do need other partners to come and help us with providing the services. I feel that chief was a little humble or short with some of these services that we've provided. We've provided, we've provided funeral expenses for people that couldn't afford them. I mean, this is happening, most of our victims are from some of our most impoverished families. So getting hit with $10,000 costs out of the blue, you know, in the middle of your most traumatic experience in your life, it's something that people need help with. And we've been able to do that. We've been able to fly in family members and put them up. We've been able to help people, as you said, when the breadwinner gets shot, we've been able to help people with short-term mortgage payments until they can get back up on their feet. But this is all about trying to help people when they are at their most vulnerable. And I'm very proud that we are doing that. The, and chief, you might not get the feedback, but I do get the feedback. So people are thankful that we are there. So I want to make sure you know that. But, so the third component, though, is this community outreach, and we haven't yet been great at the community outreach part. And this is where I really want to ask for your help. In the cities, now, we're fairly successful. Our stats are looking good, but stats go up and down. You need to look at trends. And the cities that have had the major reductions in gun violence in their trends are the ones where the community is leading or is highly participating in the GVI activities, particularly in the call-ins. The chief didn't talk a lot about the call-ins, but what we do is we bring in, so far, it's been mostly young men, all young men so far, one young woman. And these folks are at risk of getting dragged into violence. What that means is their names kind of usually pop up around stuff going on. They might not always be the ones that get the charges, but their names keep popping up, and we think that we can maybe still steer them in a right direction. But I will tell you that during the call-ins, the law enforcement folks get up. Well, I get up first and I say, you know, "We really don't want you dead or in prison. We want to do everything we can to steer you in a better direction or to open those doors for you, including tuition for trade schools or anything we need." We've gotten beds, pet surgeries, when the person felt like, you know, their most loved one was their pet and their pet was dying, and that was something that they really needed. We've done these things, and again, not with taxpayer money. This is with money that is given to us for these purposes. And, and so we tried, we try to steer them, but then also, the law enforcement folks get up, and they also let them know that we are, we have a team now. And Chief Bankard, and Chief Kaylee started this, but Chief Bankard is highly responsible for bringing together this team that we have now, unprecedented in the history of York, that we are working with on a daily basis, the U.S. Attorney's Office, the ATF, the DEA, anybody, anybody. When that man calls, people come out of the woodwork to answer his call. And, and just like he said, Jim Tyson getting up at 4 o'clock, that's what all of these folks do. And, and we are going to, we are going to continue that, but it is an amazing, it is an amazing thing that you have helped create. I want to thank you. But I need your help also because with all this that we do, we talk about the law enforcement with young people, we talk about the services that we can provide, but then the voice... voice of the community speaks. And the voice of the community are the moms that have lost their sons, the men and women that have lost their lives because of bad decisions when they were young. I just, I, I was just honored to bring in a new partner, a man that just last year got out of jail after 21 years. I need him as a partner. I need him as a partner to talk to these young people. These are the folks that, that I need in the community outreach group. And Jamil Alexander, who I'm sure most of you know, and I are working together to build up this third leg of the stool that we, of the GVI stool that we have not had strong, strong, not had, have not had as strong a participation as I would like to see. When these young men come into the auditorium, we have maybe 30 or 40 folks. I want them to see 100 people. I want them to see more people that came from the places that they're experiencing right now, that can actually talk to them. Because inevitably, we can have 40 people in there, but if the young men decide to stay afterwards, they always gravitate to usually the older men of color, people that look like them, people that can talk to them about their own experiences. And so we can show up all we want, but we can't relate the same way that community members can relate to what young people are going through in our community. So I need a lot more, we need a lot more help and partnership. So that is something I'm going to ask of you, and I'm going to ask of you out there. I don't think that we gave, we're going to do mayor's office at yorkcity.org. So anything that people are getting ideas about, or they want to participate in, the community ecosystem initiative, the GVI, anything, just feel free to reach out and contact us at mayor'soffice@yorkcity.org. And we will, we will plug you in and we'll let you know when we have a call-in coming in, coming up in September. Now, call-ins are by invite only because we have to make sure of, that we know who's going to show up. So contact us if this is something that you're interested in, but I certainly believe, and I know the chief believes that, and this is even a saying we have, GVI is not a program. It's not a project. This is a way of policing. And it is working. I know we've had an outbreak of violence here recently, but I can also tell you, I think I'm allowed to tell you, almost all the violence in the last month and a half is coming from one person. So at least the, the major, major violence. And we're working, all these partners are working like crazy to get this person off the streets. And that kind, while, while we haven't got them yet, this kind of cooperation didn't exist even two years ago. So, I don't know, I only got five and a half months to keep thanking you for everything. So I'm going to keep taking every opportunity to, to thank you, Chief Bankard.
I'm not going yet.
I know, I'm not letting you go yet. What else we got, Phillip?
I have one more comment.
Oh.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Just, just a comment on my retirement in January is not going to stop what we do with GVI. I was the law enforcement lead when we first started it, so the initiation of all of these things came from, the law enforcement side came from, came from me and the, and the initial training that we received. But because we trained the entire police department on it, because it's so embedded into our law enforcement partners, which the mayor has, has noted, and so embedded into our, ingrained into our relationships with the organ, community organizations, and because the mayor supports it, I just wanted to make clear that, that GVI is, is not going to be abandoned at all by whomever replaces me.
Phillip, I just noticed that we didn't put the one thing on there that I wanted to add, the parks plan. So I'm going to add that really quickly. Just very briefly, and this is another one, I want to thank Mayor Bracy for working with folks to create the York City Parks Conservancy that has raised over $2 million that is now put in an account. And some of that money is being given back to the city every year to help redevelop our parks here in the city. We had Little Jimmy's Park last year. We've got, well, the folks from Royal Square are doing Campus Park right now with their, what kind of tax credits were they?
Neighborhood Partnership Program.
Neighborhood Partnership Program credits. And so you, the, the improvements that have been at Grimes Gym and are now coming to Campus Park are from tax credit programs that are, have been given to us by Royal Square. So thank you for that. But you're also going to see redevelopment of Gerard Park, hopefully here by the end of September, at least for the, the kids' equipment, not, not the whole thing yet, but we've got a whole plan to redo the basketball courts around the city. Bance Park is next on the list. Bance Park is in rough shape, but we can't do all of Bance Park with just one year's worth of money. So it's, might take a little bit for us to build up the funds to do Bance Park. But you're, and you're also going to see some improvements over by Kiwanis Lake. So I'm very excited that we have a, a plan and a schedule of how to improve our parks because I think if most of you live around parks, depending on where you live, there's room for improvement in almost every park that we have. So we, we've finally got something down, got a plan and got funding sources for at least a bulk of that. What we do still need, and you can, again, mayor'soffice@yorkcity.org. Bring on Play is a group that helps build these parks and also help rate, helps raise some of the funds. And so we are looking for volunteers for Bring on Play. They're actually kind of rebuilding their, their staff of volunteers right now. So if you'd like to dig in the dirt and work with some concrete and stone and, and mulch and all that kind of good stuff, it's a good project for you.
And just real quick on Bance Park, you know, in the same way that we need partners for initiatives like GVI, we're also always looking for partners that want to assist us in our parks. And a good example of that is Pastor Walltower, Fred Walker. They have taken Bance Park and are making some improvements through a partnership with the city of York, resurfacing the basketball courts in advance of their Hope Fest, which is July 29th through August 4th at Bance Park. And you can look that up in Facebook, but they have several events. So, you know, we thank them for their support, but if you live near a park, if you worship near a park, if you want to take a park and adopt it essentially, please reach out to us and we'd love to hear your ideas on that. Before we get to question and answer, all of our colleagues over here, anybody have anything they want to add or say or promote while you have the podium? You can all say no, it's fine.
Well, I, I will add just one more thing, and that is, a lot of the folks here, well, except for the chief, if chief has something, but, you know, we have another, we'll have another economic development session that comes up in September. Next, next Wednesday, we are having a meeting with the Columbia Gas regarding the gas meters. So that'll be July 31st at six o'clock. We then have an opportunity zone meeting, a town hall meeting, this style of meeting, coming up in August. And then the economic development meeting, we're waiting till September because we're waiting for a very special study to come out that will hopefully bring us some good news about, about stuff. Thank you. And we'll also be talking, we'll also be giving you an update. We had a wonderful meeting with the Kiva Foundation and PNC Bank about microloan programs in our impoverished neighborhoods. How do we get money into people's hands that might not have the best credit, but have some good social credit in their neighborhoods and they want to build up businesses? So that's more into economic development, but it's, sometimes it's hard to tease community development and economic development apart. But we'll have more on those programs in a September meeting to be announced.
All right. I just have two things before we open it up that I want to let you know about, and this will be the first time, I believe, that we've talked about this publicly. So two big things for us, for the first time ever, beginning on September 1st, you will be able to pay and submit every, most permits for the city of York online. So at yorkcity.org, we will have a permit center. It will accept credit card payments for the first time ever. And you will be able to submit any permit from PPZ for now, but we hope to bring public works, any parks permits, things like monthly parking permits. We will all, or we will bring all of those under that umbrella. So if you've ever had to get a yard sale permit or a building permit, you know that through no fault of any of our staff, but that process is a bit antiquated, to say the least, right, chief?
Absolutely.
Okay. So we are fixing that. And, you know, it's, it's efforts like that that not only improve customer service, but also save you a lot of time. So you won't have to come down here to City Hall, fill out a paper, paper permit, find your checkbook in a junk drawer somewhere, you just pull out your credit card and you can fill out those permits online. So that will be huge for certainly our large developers, but also residents that just need a yard sale permit. So we're really excited about that. And we'll certainly be telling you more about that in the coming weeks, but we want to thank CityGrows is the company that we're partnering with, actually based out of Erie. They are a startup basically for municipal permitting. So we're really excited to work with them. And then the second thing is, and this is thanks to Cherie McFadden and our partnership with CASA, and also Ricky Quintero. By January 1st, all documents coming out of the city of York, so the Department of Economic and Community Development, as well as Business Administration, will be in both English and Spanish. So that'll be the first time that universally, all the documents that are coming out of our building will be bilingual. So excited about that.
Phillip, that also includes end market end revenue.
Beautiful. Great. So with that, we can move on to question and answer. Like we said at the beginning, if we can loosely keep this on the subject of what we've talked about or community development in general, we've got all of the experts in the room to answer hopefully most of the questions that you guys have. If we don't have an answer for you, we'll be upfront with you and we'll figure out the answer and get your contact information and be in touch. So if you have questions, please come to the microphone. Or if you don't have questions, it's a very early end.
I do have a question. I have a daughter and her name is Olivia, and she's special needs. And she, I was living in New York and I moved back here and didn't understand that when I did, I was going to suffer in homelessness because of some situations. So I'm concerned about my daughter Olivia, and I want York to be concerned and involved about it. She hasn't had her mother for years, have been in and out of prison for dumb stuff. I'm not a prisoner or criminal. My daughter needs me. It's not, it always hasn't been about me with this particular child because she's special needs. It means everybody gets past selfishness about Olivia. So her father's moving now and I'm not exactly sure what he's doing with her, but she needs to be in contact with me. I don't want to put him on blast since he's been taking care of her. But me sitting in homelessness has really, say, put a strain on relationship with my children, and I'm concerned about this one particularly. She needs me right now. I don't need to be out in the street pushing that little cart around, trying to prove myself to be resilient in ways that I need to be a mother, and I need York to get involved so that my child can have a mother.
Actually, sweetie, if you want to talk privately, I was a former social worker. Maybe there's some resources I can link you up with, okay, hon?
And if you can, if you come up to the microphone, if you can give us your name, just in case we need to follow up with you.
Well, some of you might already recognize me, and I'm going to be, be a broken record again for some of you who know me. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Donna Smajewski. I live in the city. And my concern is housing. I lived at Stony Brook Manor for 15 years. It was living hell because first of all, the neighbors, and then the management got involved in harassing me. I am now currently living in a, I think it's a beautiful, wonderful area of York in a three-apartment house. I don't want to move and certainly not into another high-rise because of my experiences. And I don't qualify for the transitional housing where the income jumps to a certain level. It's also low income to these, whether they're condos or apartments. I like, I'm trying to think, there's one on South George Street. I think it's near the, uh, Claiborne Building, or the, I'm sorry, the Health Center, the right of Claiborne. I think it's around that area. And it's, it's more individualized housing. But my concern is being that I don't want to move into another high-rise. I didn't qualify for Section 8, and I'm kind of stuck. I'm on a fixed income. And I get along with the neighbors. I have no problems. For me, it's a safe neighborhood. It's two blocks from the square. I have, you know. Anyway, I was hoping that there would be some sort of, uh, help with, at least some help with paying rent, part of it anyway. And so that's one of my concerns. And I think a lot of, I, I, I am a senior citizen. I have a mental health disability, which, when I moved in Stony Brook Manor, I was 47 years old. When I left, I was 62 years old. And so that's one of my concerns. I, I know there was the Nextdoor program. I didn't qual, either, I didn't qualify, well, I qualified, but they keep saying, kept saying that there's no funding, and I've heard other things about the Nextdoor program that were not appropriate comments, not by me, but by other people. So I don't know how true they are. Anyway, and I'm going to be repetitive about mental health funding. And I understand it takes a special person to become a therapist or a psychiatrist, but I think that the initiative should be there to have more emphasis on those careers. Because, you know, it's, it's not, I don't see it being as promoted as robotics and tech and everything. And also, the mental health professional funding is minimal. Now, I know it comes from the U.S. government, down to the state, down to the county. But it is, and I know, mayor, there is a lot of money being used for the opioid crisis, and I think that's part of mental health. But those people that are not necessarily part of the opioid crisis are, are, well, we're not being neglected, but the, you know, the, the services are not there. There's, some places, there's a six-month wait for a psychiatrist. There's at least a three-month wait for a psychologist. Many places are overwhelmed with patients that there is, they turn away, turn away patients. And as I said, the funding is just, you know, miniscule. I mean, I'm, maybe I'm exaggerating. And so that's, those are my two concerns. And so I'm sorry I took up a lot of time, but...
You're fine. You're fine. And no, you're not exaggerating, exaggerating. The funding is miniscule. And it's, it comes through the county. Every time I speak with the county commissioners, any chance I get, I advocate, and, and our legislators, I advocate for funding for mental health. I have been known to say, and I'll say it again, I'm not sure that there's anybody that lives in New York City that isn't suffering from some level of trauma.
I agree with that.
Because when I was a kid and I heard a loud noise... Because when I was a kid and I heard a loud noise, I didn't think about gunshots. Now I hear a balloon pop and I think about gunshots. That's the kind of trauma.
Well.
You know, that to have your brain warped that way from your surroundings is a kind of trauma. And I'm not trying to compare it to, to extreme trauma. What I'm saying is that one way or the other, we are affected by our surroundings. And unfortunately, it's also true that, and this is part of our community ecosystem initiative, is that we want to help people connect with mental health services. So that's been, that's one of the, the services that has been outlined, that we're trying to get out there. But you are correct, it's great to try and connect folks with the services, but if the services aren't there, then you get six-month waits. So that's something I empathize with and want to, want to work on and will continue to work on. But you're already aware that the city doesn't provide that. I don't know from the Health Department side. I'd asked if we had any info from our side. Do you have anything Craig?
Yeah. Unfortunately, we don't receive any direct funding that's explicit for mental health services overall. But it is, you know, as you stated, such a, you know, crucial issue and it's affecting a lot of people. So what I do want to share though, is with our Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies program, we're really looking at any opportunity to really meet the needs of the folks that are enrolled in that program. So one thing that we're piloting right now, so the Healthy Moms, Healthy Babies program is a home visitation nurse program. So we're looking at bringing in four participants in that program that need mental health services. We're partnering with True North Wellness to actually bring mental health services into the home. We're in the early stages of that, but we are already seeing some of the impacts that that's having on, you know, the lives of the families and their children. So we're really looking at any opportunity we can to kind of build those things into our programs. I also want to share that, you know, as Mayor stated, there's a lot of things going on at the county level. That's kind of who receives those funds directly. But even some of the other players in our community, like the York County Community Foundation, there's the Memorial Health Fund. I do know that they are prioritizing programs that are aimed at addressing mental health issues. So in the, you know, the public health and medical community, it is being, everyone's aware that it's something that needs addressed. It's something that relies on funding and we are trying to work on, you know, increasing those services for, for people in our area.
And unlike, as I used to say, some of the funding and maybe more of the, well, not more, but some of the funding is used for nonprofits. And I know they have a place in the community, but if that funding, some of that funding were channeled toward professional services, I think that might help. And Chief Banker, I think, I don't know if I'm correct, but you have the expertise, but I think a lot of criminals have mental health issues, have situational issues. And of course, you know, the, I think if they were addressed, you know, even if they were, you know, I know children still are part of the violence, but if, if that were addressed, I think maybe some of this, and I don't know, I'm just surmising, would, would, you know, change the course of these people's lives.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Donna. And Mr. Crosby and I spoke a little bit about the rent assistance part of your question. And I think that you have absolutely identified a gap that exists. I don't know if you can expand on that a little bit, James.
You know, there's definitely some type of gap there. You know, if you've gone to some agencies and they're not able to, you know, assist you with your rent, then I'm not sure, you know, if your income level will allow the programs that are in place to, you know, to assist you. So, you know, for people who are at certain income levels, you know, I'm not sure if there's a whole lot of stuff out there, you know, like to help you with that. But, you know, I'll give you my card after this and I'd be willing to like make some telephone calls for you to see if there's anything else out there that, you know, can, can help a person that's like teetering on the line. So, you know, I'll be glad to do that.
Thanks James. Anyone else? Yes ma'am.
So my name is Lisa Smith and my husband and I pastor a small church. And our heart is to just spend time with people who have come from where we have. And my husband used to live on the streets in York City. But my question is for you, for the healthy eating, are there any initiatives that you're going to put into place to maybe teach places that feed the homeless better, better quality, you know, providing better quality foods and healthy eating? Because we've, you know, gone to some of these places and have sat down and had meals and some of the things, you know, I would not want to eat. And, you know, eating good quality things is very important for their health.
Yeah. First thing I want to say, I think that's a really great point. I think actually anytime there's large meals being prepared, whether it's, you know, a church doing it for their congregation, for the homeless population, even in school settings, those are some really great ways to, you know, to improve nutrition for a large group of people. It's, it's a tough thing because then I think that often competes with, you know, the funding that might be available. It's unfortunate that eating healthy often costs a little bit more. A lot of times, you know, unhealthy eating habits have to do with, you know, convenience or what's cheaper. But what I would like to make myself available to do is if there's any group that, that is interested in trying to, you know, make the meals healthier, I'd make myself and any of our nutrition focused staff available to help provide some guidance. And I'd even do some research just to see if there's any kind of funding opportunities available to support that. So I can pass off my contact information to you after and see if there's any way we can help.
Yeah. And everybody, most of the folks that we've spoken about tonight, all of our email addresses are on this form. So if you need anything, feel free to reach out directly, or you can reach out to me or the mayor's office. So thank you. Thank you for that question. Anyone else? Yes ma'am.
All righty. It's good to see you again. All right. You were talking, going back to knocking on doors and getting information from people. Your egress into those doors, how do you perceive the, perceive how that is going to happen?
Well, we hope to build up trust through consistency. So we are putting out all of, all of the folks that we have hired and kind of one of the qualifications to be a community ecosystem coordinator is the empathy and experience that allows you to be humble and to let folks communicate with you. I think that is a, that is the key.
I understand that part of it.
And while, while I don't expect every door to open, I hope that word of mouth will build support. And so maybe if somebody doesn't open the door a couple of times, maybe their neighbor, they'll hear from their neighbor that when their neighbor opened the door, one of our coordinators was able to help them with the problem.
We have a situation that we have an awful lot of people coming around. They'll knock on the door and they're for this and they're for that and they're for something else, utility companies supposedly. And so I don't do business at the door. So you've got to say, all right, I am from so-and-so and hey, listen, I saw you happen to have. Are you interested in talking about anything that's going on in the neighborhood? Is this your interest and your approach?
Yes. Well, actually, I think what we should do is have everybody come up here right now. Coordinators, come up to the front.
(laughing).
Come on. I'm serious. Because this is what we have to do. We have to let people know who we are.
Yes.
And so most of, most of these women have been working in their community, communities one way or another for many years. I will say Jay is a little new to our community, but she's awesome, but.
Hi.
Yes.
So, so the idea is, and again, I mean, they've been working in their communities for a long time and those are the kinds of folks that we are looking for and hoping to encourage them to do what they're already doing, but maybe a little bit slightly differently. And most of them have been doing their work without getting paid for, for just trying to help in their community.
I'm not offering. I wish I could, but I'm not offering.
So.
But in all seriousness, we get so many people at the door and we don't know.
Well, we're going to do a lot of other things. So we're going to be offering programs in the community, which means putting flyers in people's doors. And, you know, this is an old school grassroots kind of, kind of work here.
Let us know you're coming.
Okay.
Can I say this?
Yes ma'am.
One of the things that you need to look for is to make sure that we have our City of York badge. If you're coming to knock on your door, that's the first thing we should acknowledge is that we're from the City of York and this is who I am. Okay? The next thing I'm going to ask the mayor is that he provided us with the City of York t-shirts.
Okay. So that way you know exactly that we are City of York.
Is this some kind of setup? What was that?
I didn't mean to before.
Uh huh. Uh huh. Wait a minute, she knew you by name though. Don't, don't, don't pull, don't pull that on me.
Ah, but Mr. Mayor.
Miss Sylvia's been at the council meetings before.
Oh, I know. I know. But do you.
But seriously, that, getting egress is your biggest problem.
Yep. We know. We know. But I think, yes.
And also with Miss Sylvia not wanting people to.
Also with Miss Sylvia not wanting individuals to knock on her door, we just want to make, make sure that you understand that we do have a location. We are at Championship Community Center.
Well, this is it. The thing is, it's not so much that I don't want people at my door, I just don't want being conned by people every time it turns on.
Got you. That makes sense.
And my neighbors don't like it.
Right. And with that being said, if they feel more comfortable coming to the office, we are located at 459 West King Street at the Championship Community Center.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, just let us know you're there.
Yes ma'am.
Who you are.
Yes. Absolutely.
Thank you Sylvia.
Thank you. One more moment.
Sure.
Chief Banker, I wanted to say thank you personally for the job that you do and your people do. Yes, I'm getting around. Oh, you see me out by the, anyway, the boots on the street are fantastic. And I hope that that is something that is maintained. I know you don't have that many people, you do it all the time everywhere. And I hope someday that you do. Last year, my neighborhood was a terror. I mean, I had, all this time, I couldn't even watch my thanks yard be built safe. My mom had it built safe. This year, let's go have a party. It's good. And I wanted to say thank you. Good. Thank you for that.
Thanks everybody. We'll get you those t-shirts. They're coming out of Steve Buffington's budget though, so.
I gave it to you.
Yes sir.
I want a t-shirt too. Thank you. I have three questions in five parts. No, just kidding. So less of a question. First, I just want to say to all of you up there and over here, I think you guys do a tremendous job. And I think a lot of times it's a thankless job, but I think the fact that you guys are here is great. So my name is Sal Galdamis and I'm the founder of York Excel, which is at 7 East Market Street. So here, I'm not here as a resident, but as a nonprofit person and also as someone who's out doing a lot of work in, in the city. So having said thank you for what you do, when we go out into the street, it's about, what we're trying to do is really try to get as many organizations and as people working together, being out, boots on the ground on the street and really trying to build the platforms and the, bringing all the tools and not necessarily connecting people to services, but building platforms where people can see pathways to successful lives in the, in the communities they live in. So whether it's the economic platforms, or the health platforms, or the housing platforms, we want to be able to have people feel like they have power over their situation. The message that we try to, to spread is that we all have a role to play here. It's not about the city solving the problems. It's not about government. It's not about any single organization coming in and fixing things. It's really up to us as businesses, as organizations, as residents, to use the skills that we have to get that work done, whether it's like Richard Johnson who started his gutter ministry and he takes, and Mayor, you came out and you helped him clean up, I can't remember the name of the alley, Pierce Alley. But that's somebody who you normally wouldn't expect to start a project like that, but now he has like, I think, I would say like maybe 20 blocks that every single week he's going out picking up the trash, cleaning up the gutters and spreading the message that, hey, let's, let's try to keep our neighborhood clean. So it's not about when is the city going to come and pick up this trash? It's about finding the people that have those passions, that have those skills to be able to do those things. So what I will offer and what we've talked about before offering is whatever York Excel can do to help you do what you're doing. And Sylvia, is that your name Sylvia? I'm Sal. So, hi Sylvia. Good to meet you. But what we're doing when we're out there is we're building that connection to the communities. We spent, we spend four weeks at a time at one intersection getting to know people. So what we would, what we can provide for the city is that, that trust building that works with the, with the coordinators while they're going out. So we're doing things like cleaning up the gutters and the litter and taking pictures of all the houses on those four blocks, feeding them into an ARC GIS system so that we know what they look like and we can keep track of those things, talking to, to the neighbors. Like we're on East Poplar now, there's 30 kids there. Their biggest complaint, how fast the cars go by on that one-way street. So during our street meet this week from 4:00 to 7:00, that's going to be one of the things that we're going to be talking to them about, ideas of what they can do, how they can petition the city, but how they can band together to solve that problem that they have on that street. So based on that, again, I think I'll just reiterate that that's, that's what York Excel is here to do, work with everybody, work with you and whatever we can do to help you. We're here to do that.
Hey Sal.
Thanks Sal.
Hi.
Hi, Annie Clark. I wanted to get up, not so much because I have a question, but I just want to make a comment that I do appreciate all the people that show up for the children of the West End. And, you know, you come to speak and ride bikes and bring us healthy living. And I am proud of the things that we do in our community. I'm also proud of the residents who showed up today. We need more time that information is provided. Because, you know, with the more knowledge we have, the less disagreements we have. So I just want to thank you for the event. My granddaughter, who I drug out the house last minute, I'm like, come on, let's go. She's like, what is it? I'm like, I'll explain on the way. So thank you for all of your hard work and I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Yes sir.
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian Kingsley. It's good to see everybody. But I wanted to come up because, you know, I normally don't come to these things, so I'm doing a nice little suit because I wanted to come out today. And I wanted to ask, I have a couple of questions and maybe a couple of statements. So if you don't know me, I have an organization called Pedal for Peace. And it started grassroots in 2017 and kind of really blew up. And we've been able to do some absolutely amazing things, but it's kind of grown out past my standing, to be honest. You know, I have, we did a full count last night, Mayor, and you're talking about 213 kids that we've even given bikes to, or that come at random times throughout us, either fixing bikes or riding on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The other week, you know, because there's so many riding now, that when they all meet together to ride, you know, at any given point, you could have 30 to 50 kids. past my standing, to be honest. You know, I have, we did a full count last night, Mary, and you're talking about 213 kids that we've even given bikes to, or that come at random times throughout us, either fixing bikes or riding on Tuesdays and Thursdays. The other week, you know, because there's so many riding now, that when they all meet together to ride, you know, at, at any given point, you could have 30 to 50 kids literally riding through the city, you know? And so my question is, well, first statement is, we have our big ride coming up, you know, that we're looking at September 14th. So obviously, I'm going to need to meet with the chief and meet with everybody else, obviously coordinating some logistics for that. But I also wanted to ask, because you said about partnering up with the parks. And Phil, I want to see about maybe doing something that I can help get these guys off of the street, maybe to a designated area where these guys are, are free to ride, where maybe we set up some, maybe obstacles, you know, because everybody's complaining about them swerving cars in traffic. And Mary, you were talking about trends. And unfortunately, it's a dangerous trend that's happening right now. But it's all over the internet with these guys swerving cars, and they're swerving buses. And I would like to see if I can maybe take a proactive measure in getting them off of the streets, because that's going to also help our community, because people, commuters will be able to drive. They'll, they'll feel safer, you know. The, the guys on the bikes, it sucks, but some of them even got hit by cars. And they just, they're general junkies. You know, at this point, they're like, I'm survived, you know, my bike's okay. I'm going to continue to do what we're doing, you know? At the same time, you and I both know that that's very unsafe, you know? And what was very bothersome for me were the comments that followed from off of some different pages on Facebook, calling these kids monkeys, and calling them thugs, and gangsters, and everything else. And it, that was, that was very appalling to me. You know, I was, I was, I was very disturbed by that, because it's like, we're working diligently to keep them from, from, from shooting guns, and from selling drugs, and from robbing things. And, you know, we're teaching them how to use tools and fix bikes, and actually learn certain skills. And, you know, one of our rules is to, to continue to get maintenance on your bike, you have to help us build one that we're going to give away, you know? And, and they come, and they do it diligently. I could ask them to show up here, 10 o'clock in the morning, and now we'll all show up to support, you know, because they love what they're doing. So for our community to start making comments like that, and somebody had even said in one post, like, man, it sounds very racist what you're saying. And the lady said, yeah, no, I'm being racist. You know, this is exactly what it's intended for, you know? And I, I don't agree with that rhetoric. You know, there's, there's a million interactions that happen on all kind of levels between white, black, Latino, it doesn't matter, that are good every day. But obviously, you know, the media point out a lot of the negative things that happen, you know? So I want to continue to be a beacon, a light, a good energy ambassador in our community, that there are amazing things happening, you know? How at the same time do we take and, and curve some of that negative attention that is coming our way, and get these guys maybe off of the street or into a designated area where they know that it's, it's okay for them to ride, you know, where it's safe for them to ride. They're okay to be in this particular area. And, you know, that's why I said it was kind of a statement, but kind of questions at the same time.
Well, I think, you know, we've got Memorial Park. We've got a large, huge, huge parking lot that unless there's a tournament there, there's nobody there. And now, I know that's on the opposite side of the city from where you're working right now. But, I mean, to me, that's the perfect location.
Over at the skate park, Memorial Park?
Yeah.
And we do ride over there. But now, here's, here's my thing that happens, right? It's so many of us, and a lot of time, my guys want to go into the skate park. So when you have 15, 20, 30 bikes go into a skate park, it, it ruffles, it ruffles feathers there, you know? Because the skaters and those guys, and I understand the culture, because I snowboard, and I skate, I do all this stuff, they get pretty upset by that, because it's a lot of, that's, it's a lot of people at this point, you know? That's, that's, that's the thing. So even going in there, if, we could maybe, maybe it would work if we could set up something that said, this is, there's a duality of things happening here. It's, you know, obviously, the skate park had premise and has been here for some years, but we're also going to start to integrate more bikes, you know? Because I even thought about that. There's that long strip that goes up the Penn Street, Penn State, you know? And sometimes when I ride over there with them, what I'll do is we'll set up cones or set up the trash cans and stuff like that in that big lane, so they can swerve and do different things. So if we could maybe come up with maybe something that was a little more concrete, or, you know, just, what's the word I'm looking for?
Central?
Yeah, more, more central, you know, it, it would help. Because, you know, I, I talked to you when this was all starting. We sat down at a, it was Mi Carero, and, and here we are, you know?
I remember well.
Yeah, yeah. Coming up, coming up on two years later, and it's, it's, it's done some absolutely incredible things, you know? And I don't, I don't want that progression or the, the negative attention to hinder or deter these kids from, from living a joy. You know what I mean? Just riding a bike. You know, the swerving traffic, I understand, is very dangerous. I'm working on combating that. But if I can get them off of the street, the traffic's not even an issue anymore. You know? So that's, that's why I said it was kind of a question and a statement. And Craig, Phil, Mr. Crosby, I've yet to really meet you in person, but it's nice to meet you now.
Yeah. And I, I'm going to talk to Tom Landis. He's, he's the park superintendent. I think we can probably arrange even just a special time for you folks to, to come through, have the kids come. That way, it is that clear delineation that, you know, this is, this is the bike time.
Okay.
But let's, let's have a dialogue about it, because I think it's a good idea. And I think Memorial Park's a perfect place for it. But, yeah, I can see how that, that might be some tension there. Craig, is there anything you wanted to add? And Craig, while you're talking, I am actually out of town on September 14th, but if we can have some city support for the, for the ride, have some guys on bikes, that'd be good.
Sure thing. You have a couple of things I would like to say. First, what you were sharing about the comments that people were making on Facebook, it made me think back on when I was a kid, building ramps in the middle of my neighborhood street, or building ramps in some private lot that we just found a way to break through the fence and get in.
Yeah.
Nobody was calling the cops on me.
Yeah.
So I totally understand what you're saying. You know, seeing, seeing kids out there, being, being active is exactly what we want. Of course, there's the thrill-seeking side.
Right.
And, and I definitely thank you for everything that you're doing, because I've seen over the last year or two, I've started to see, you know, at least when there is a group of kids riding down Market Street, they're in the shared lane, and they may get out of the way when, you know, a group of, of cars are coming in the other direction. So I'm definitely seeing the improvement. It, it's a slow process, because if you tried to take them, you know, to do a 180-degree switch from thrill-seeking to, you know, safety geeks.
Yeah.
You would have lost them. So I think you're doing an awesome job. As far as places to ride, there's a lot of work going on to make the existing bike lanes that we have safer. I think that's great for more of like, you know, the commuter or like the typical rider. But as far as like trick riding, I think there is a real need to have a designated spot. There's some really cool examples from some other cities where they've actually taken some, you know, some, like, smaller vacant lots and done almost like, like temporary pump tracks.
Yeah.
So that kids can do, you know, trick riding. We can definitely go into more detail with that and see, you know, what opportunities there are to work on something like that. There was also even a case about a year ago where there was funding lined up for a pump track at one of the county parks, and they actually had turned it down. And I believe that they're still looking for a location. So that might be a great partnership.
Let's put it at Ben's Park.
Yeah. Well, let's, yeah, I'll put an email together with the three of us and Tom on it, and we'll, we'll start digging into this.
And Brent, are you still looking for anybody to help?
Always.
Okay. And you're doing, and when are you meeting with the kids?
Tuesdays at 5:00, we meet at Championship Community Center from 5:00 to 7:00, which it's, I'm normally there by myself, you know, maybe one of my small mechanics. So I'm normally there until about 8:00, because it's just, it's a lot of kids at this point, you know?
Yeah. So somebody that just wants to help kids and either, is either a little bit mechanically inclined, already works on bikes, or is just mechanically inclined? I mean, I remember when I was 10 and taking my bike apart and putting it back together. It worked most of the time. Most of the time, I put it right back together.
Yeah. So we fix bikes on Tuesdays, 5:00 to 7:00, and then we ride on Thursdays. And that's how I'm trying to, you know, coerce them into watching how I ride, and the conductivity and the, the safety, you know, what we went over at the Pennsylvania Bike Summit, you know, some of the safety protocols and stuff like that of riding, kind of just in preparation for when we do our big ride. Because last year, the logistics, you know, somebody had got injured, and some different things were happening. And thanks to Miss Ann and Lincoln Charter, I seen the way they did their ride this year, being involved. So I think that we're going to, we're going to situate ourselves a little differently, so that we can break it down into age groups to help with that safety and everything else happening. So...
Awesome. Thanks, man. If you, if you're in the audience, if you go on Facebook, it's P-E-D-A-L, the number four, peace. So Pedal For Peace, and you can find out more about the great work that Brent does. Anyone else out there? All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Just to reiterate, we all are here to work for you guys and with you. Please send us emails. And then I, I forgot, I neglected to thank Cliff Kern, who with WRCT is running the feed right now. He is actually, he is off work in a car directing the show digitally. So, yeah. He's not back there. No, he's in a car. Yeah. So thanks, Cliff, if you're out there. Thanks, everybody.